Implementation, obviously, one of the big issues still to be determined is the actual amount of the fee. And we had some, we'll have some discussion, a little bit about where we're going to start, potentially, and some of the pitfalls and areas and things that need to be addressed before we could actually implement. At least that, that was my take on what we should get accomplished here today. Mr. Horton, you want to start with anything, or just jump?
Our ballgame, boss.
Our ballgame, okay. So, as I said, everyone, you know, one of the issues that I had going around is how this will affect what they would call non-single-family residence structures and properties. And I know that was one of the big concerns, I think, from my understanding of why this never got implemented in the first place. And so I've had numerous discussions back and forth with Mr. Blackaby, and it's pretty apparent that this needs to be implemented just kind of across the board, whatever it is, it is. You start tampering with it, it legally takes on some potential open ship liability for being sued about whether it's a tax or a fee, or those kinds of things if you try to, you know, do things that might offset for, for business versus residential, or whatever. So that's kind of where we are right this minute. So if anybody wanted to kind of speak on what we were looking at, we have some revised projections that Mr. Horton has provided us for. And of course, this 2025 figure of $718,000 potential total revenue would, would certainly be less than that this first year, since we would be not implementing for probably at least another month or two. So, you know, that would be minimized the first.
Does everybody have that?
I don't think I have. I have 848,000.
Okay.
So are we doing this at the $5 per?
That's, 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 this is, that's part of the question here, I guess, right? I mean, that's what this, but that's what this projection is based on. You know, I had some data from, I inherited a study here, I guess, that was done on a few properties, as to what that might mean, you know, some commercial properties that have large parking lots and are pretty much close to 100% impervious. You know, could it end up, you know, 635 stormwater fee compared to, at the time this was done back in '21, $400 in taxes, the stormwater fee could actually end up being larger than, you know, than somebody's actual taxes.
Do you have a schedule of the top impervious surface commercial?
No, this was just, I think, a survey, random survey of some properties that Mayor Morrissey had asked to have fees figured out. I'll pass it down, you can take a look at it, but it's not necessarily, you know, the top, top ones or whatever, it was just kind of a random, I bet I can tell, it looks like a, just a random sampling of some different properties and how it might be impacting their, based on their percentage of impervious surface. And of course, one of the other, you know, one of the other big components to this that is the credit manual, implementation of the credit manual, and administration of those, of that credit policy, as far as, you know, who's, who, who is our individual that's going to be making those determinations, and where that person's coming from, so. Thanks. Perhaps, Mr. Mar, if you would, are you kind of there to talk to us about some of the critical first projects that we might want to look at, and what kind of number that would be to give us a little basis for what kind of fee we're looking at, maybe, and what we can do with those fees if we have them?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am. Yeah, I passed out a little handout on every podium for everyone, and if you look at that, that list, it kind of looks like, yes, this is taken from the city's stormwater master plan, and then the updated Freeze-Nichols study for the water sewer and stormwater master plan. This is a compilation of those projects. The first page, all the priority one projects that were rated from the Thomason-Hutton study, from the stormwater utility task force, and Freeze-Nichols. Okay, so that's what, if you look at the priority, this first page is the list of the priority ones. But we did it public works. We took it and we put it, there was not a, a project order per se in the master plan, it was just a priority one, a priority two, priority three, or, or long range kind of stuff. So, so we took those priority one projects, and this is our, our public works prioritization. For instance, the Bartlett Street projects, doesn't make sense to do the upstream before you do the downstream. So we just put them in that kind of, kind of order and stuff. But these are all the top-rated projects. Okay, so then we took, these are, you will see some, oh, and we also incorporated that study from Crook River Plantation that was presented to council a couple months ago. We incorporated those into the, what they had as priority one projects as well, but we don't have any costs associated with those yet, because we haven't even got surveyed done to be able to even start coming up with a solution. So, but if you take the priority one projects, and these are based on 2019 numbers, not, they haven't extrapolated out the current dollars, 2019, just these priority one, and not even including this bottom project, which was listed, which was on there, as, that's a canal that was planned from Corlaine Oaks Trailer Park, down through an existing wetlands, building a canal through the wetlands, down to the fire station, coming in behind the fire station. I don't even think that's a permissible project anymore. So not even count that $2 million project back then. The rest of the projects, not counting, were roughly 1.4 million, and then if you look at the Crooked River, probably in the neighborhood, $2 million for just this first page, we're looking $500,000 to $700,000 a year in revenues, then that's, just this first page could take four to five years in current dollars. So, so anyway, we didn't move through them, prioritize all the twos and threes that are on the following pages, because by the time we get done with the first, that could change anyway.
So, for example, the first project we got up here, 639,141, for Bartlett Street and Alexander Street, is, is, is that, what of that project, I guess, I mean, I know probably the four-by-nine double box culvert, based on other discussion we had, we would probably, that would be the kind of thing we'd have to contract out because of?
Correct.
Cave-in type situ, you know, whatever those retaining walls are, that kind of stuff. But some of the segments of piping and stuff would, is there, is there any in-house capability in this project?
There is, and if you look at some of these costs, they're reflected there as well. When it's just cutting a road, changing a pipe out, increasing the pipe size, adding a second pipe, kind of things, yes, that's part of those, that other ditch crew, or in-house staff can, can do.
So on that $100,000 project, can that be broken down into achievable segments? Because the first year, we won't have that kind of money, but can we, are we able to start on any of those, or are we able to fully fund it?
But doesn't have to be, like, these projects, like on this particular one, you can see that there's 24-inch pipes, and 36-inch pipe, and the box culvert, there's other pieces that can get started.
So would that have a positive impact on stormwater right away? We could do parts?
Parts, yes, ma'am. It doesn't have to be the total project, and that's why the, all the notes, that's why you can see how it's broken down on those different things, to let you know it's not a single, single item costing that much, it's part of a larger project.
Well, that, this really addresses one of my concerns. I wanted, we did, on that fee, I was hoping that we could restrict the use of it to only capital improvement of either infrastructure or equipment, specific equipment that we need to achieve the drainage benefits and stormwater management benefits if we wanted to achieve and not allocate sunk costs such as personnel, that kind of thing, to this fund. Just one of my thoughts on that.
I think, Mr. Mar, willing to make a recommendation, if council's willing.
Yeah. Well, you just nailed it. I would recommend that the money that's raised from the fund, exactly that, be paid for those capital projects in-house and contracted out when we need to, kind of stuff, the engineers required, um, equipment. There's some other equipment that will help us, being able to, to clean up and maintain, especially some of these real tight easements in between homes and stuff that were very narrow, that we can't get our equipment into, too tight, plus it's wet, kind of stuff. So that, that would be what I would say, since we're already budgeted, or at least in the current year, we're already budgeted with staff, we already got budget for our existing equipment, we've already got budgeted for our uniforms, all those soft, all those operating costs. So I'd say build up that capital, that fund, be able to directly towards projects.
Right, so just, they're worked on the same page. What you're saying is, in the purpose of this fund, we would never allocate what I would consider to be sunk costs. In other words, we have a dedicated ditch crew, and then we have other, I mean, we also have, you know, some implementation costs, for instance, I'm curious about the mechanics of billing and lighting for the fee, if that would be done with the water bills, and, you know, maybe that's something that the council would have to address, or what's your point?
That's, that's kind of the way it's laid out in the, in the plan, and to your point, Ms. King, I also sent this to everyone in the email, which is the financial analysis, and the hybrid thinking, I guess is the way you're, you're leaning more, the hybrid thinking is more what's recommended, from what I gather out of the document, with meaning that you've got a big chunk coming out of general fund, but you also have the, another chunk of money, if you will, allocated for capital improvements and some of those other costs that you're, you're talking about, if that makes sense. That's, it's recommended.
Yeah, I would also recommend the, the kind of operational costs that we have, the normal culvert repairs, sinkhole repairs, those kind of road things, be left in the budget, away from the stormwater utility fund. That's, that's just my recommendation.
Bobby, I, I really agree with your recommendation, because that we, we don't get ourselves in, and we can always move from one project to the other without any necessary expenses.
Right, and real quick, for, I gave you a map that looks like this, this is just kind of graphical depiction of where all the projects are located, so to give you an idea. It's not a single area of the city, it's throughout the whole city, the projects identified in this list are located.
Well, I'll catch you up here, Bobby, and ask, I know after GMA, some of the discussion there, have, are y'all at a point where you're, make some recommendations about private culvert cleaning? And Mr. Riley out there sent us all a mail earlier today with a recommendation we might get a revolving fund of sorts that, you know, where, where if we have a situation where a private driveway is intact there, or, you know, you know, needs to be cut up, taken out, or whatever, you know, in order to, you know, effect a repair that was, is causing issues for everyone upstream, because it's not draining underneath somebody's driveway, that there might be a way to, you know, finance the cost of that at a lower cost for them by having the city involved in the repair, and then them paying a, you know, I mean, that'd be administrative order we have to put into place, but, you know, I like, I like the concept of it, that, you know, we could go ahead and get the repair done, you know, and then, you know, because a lot of times it is a personal financial, you know, stumbling block that keeps people from fixing or, or cleaning out these culverts, or, you know, making the repairs themselves, or whatever. And if you can find a way to make it a little more cost-effective for them to, to do that, it impacts, you know, every upstream from them, kind of drainage that, you know, that they're not going to get if that particular culvert is blocked, or whatever, that was kind of, but, you know, have, have y'all kind of evaluated for the augers, the water jets, the different kinds of things that?
Yeah, we have the jetting technology and the auger, I'd say it's 43, 44 for it. However, while I do think there should be some type of program, I don't think it should come from the stormwater utility funds. That needs to be set up as a totally separate item, however that's structured. That way, we don't take away, because quite frankly, there's so many culverts that you could easily eat up your whole revenue stream, just in those type replaced, culvert replacements, and not be able to do the projects that are needed. So, once again, in my opinion, not a discussion.
Do you have any recommendation for alternate programs, then? I mean, I thought Riley had a good idea, but what would be an example of an alternate program that doesn't take away our utility?
Funding, I'm talking strictly the funding. You know, I'd say, set aside different funds from the stormwater utility, if we were to offer a program like Mr. Riley was suggesting for revolving loan fund, just don't tie it to revenues for the stormwater utility.
Yeah, you know, potential, you know, fund equity situation or something, that we could fund that, that program with, you know, understanding that over time, we're going to, should be getting paid back, you know, you know, by, by those residences on there.
Would there be any kind of financial need assessment done for application to that fund?
I, you know, yeah, I mean, I say, I think we've talked about before that, well, not necessarily financial need, we hadn't talked about that, but about, you know, the cost of repair of these things, I mean, the, the need to repair could be critical, cost of repair could be something that we, as, you know, not to impinge on private business, but, you know, when we need to get it done, and the homeowner can't afford to pay a private contractor, you know, where, where we stand there, we stand in an impasse.
And that's kind of.
And so, you know, having a mechanism that allows us to, to go in and do this, and at least offer, you know?
Yeah.
A reasonable service with a reasonable payback structure, you know, with the attorney to make sure that it passes the rule. But, you know, there would have to be some type of agreement where, I guess, that would be an additional, I don't know if you can apply an additional loan repayment to the water bill or utility bill, but probably fine.
I mean, I'm not aware of any private industry out now that's going around offering, you know, culvert cleaning and whatever, or, so we're not necessarily stepping on anybody's toes right now, you know?
Right, there is a model, you know, that we use whenever we did the Gaines-Davis installation, that those capital recovery fees and stuff, the residents could, could pay it back over time versus all at once, so.
And one of my concerns is, you know, just to the impact of the, the fee itself, especially when it comes to the larger properties with the impervious services, you know, I know we have, like, say Walmart, that's obviously a big one, you know, and they're a large company, I'm sure they won't like, they could absorb it, but like, you know, my, you know, while I'm concerned for studies, you know, tax collection increasing, you know, I wouldn't want to be a deterrent, you know, for the lot parties that we have pending rehab, like the old plan, you know, that's a company, you know, potentially coming in to fix that thing up, and then they're, you know, have their natural model set up, and then we hit, it could be larger than their property taxes. So that's just one of the concerns that we really need to put some thought into, and see if there's any way to possibly work it out, to where that wouldn't be a deterrent, you know? Like Pigmental City is a big new project as well, that, you know, has funding and they're, you know, with their issue, you know, they've, they've, you know, increasing their budget for, for this project that they have, so it just, I want to make sure we're taking something that's a deterrent for business in St. Mary's as well.
Right, and that, that's where the credit manual kind of comes in, doesn't solve the, solve that total issue, but it gives options, and these commercial entities are, are better apt to take advantage of those items in that credit manual, to reduce up to 50% total. Never can go below that 50% total credit.
One of the things, I was reading through the manual earlier, and some of the green initiatives and low-impact initiatives that are, Councilwoman King and I were discussing earlier, she sent me some photos from North Carolina somewhere.
Tennessee.
Tennessee, with some pervious surface parking lots, where they lay down these plastic grids of sort, and then fill it in with a crushed stone, and I guess they might have some sort of epoxy or something to help place or whatever, but it, you know, creates a, a parking area that's, you know, that drains through, and we have credits for those kinds of things in the manual, and encourage those kinds of things, because the, the city is going to get its own fair share of impervious surface in the current parking lot, if we don't find some mitigation things out there in the new city hall. So, you know, some things to definitely consider as practices.
That process you were talking about with the grid system, with the pervious stone and all, the Hilton down in Orlando, adjacent to the center, they have that, that similar, might not be exact one, but a similar type parking area that looks like a grass kind of area, pervious to a grid system.
What about the credit manual administrative requirements? Now, the credit manual references a stormwater management manager.
I'd like, I'd like to take that second, if we can maybe have a little more discussion, consensus about the money, and then we'll get into implementation and administration.
Okay, all right.
So, anybody else have any other fee, any concerns or questions about the fee amount or dollar?
I, you know, I think the $5 is good. I'm wondering for, as you pointed out on that list, there are quite a few businesses that have a rather large impact, so, and I know we have to do everything across the board, if we implement it, do we want to give some story phase in? In other words, we implement it, but it begins on such and such a date in future? And get some information out there, community about how much it's going to, what it's going to look like for them?
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, I think, and they said it, you know, Stormwater Committee said it, and, you know, the, the importance of the public relations and education, marketing of this program is going to be very integral to, you know, out, everybody understands what options are before them for the, because, you know, even single-family residences have some, some options for, you know, mitigating their fee, based on, you know, some of the things in the credit manuals. And, and like I said, getting, getting ourselves set up and being, for the influx of applications for credits and those kinds of things is going to be a big part to, to make sure you're ready, if we, if we start this program, and we can decide to start next week, it'll take a little time to, to get all the ducks in a row and decide exactly, you know, the processes and procedures for, you know, how all this is going to have to happen, but I don't, I'm not even opposed to, you know, a phase in potentially of the fee, I mean, it does slow this process down, you know, but if we started at, you know, 250 for the first year, and then rolled out at $5 the second year, then, you know, I don't know if that makes that much a difference to businesses and that kind of stuff, that bigger, you know, I mean, typical single-family residents, $5 per month, it was 60 bucks a year, so 30 or 60, probably not a major thing one way or the other, for businesses, it could, it could make a, a pretty big difference to get, you know, you know, especially starting midstream, depending on where their fiscal year, those kinds of things, so setting a time to start in the, in the, in the future, but also a potential for a phase in, you know, it might be a reasonable, you know, accommodation to make.
Would it create any difficulty in changing, say, from 250 to $5 on the billing? Is that a pretty easy thing to?
That would be just a simple change of the normal system.
Okay, so that would.
So like a soft rollout that would, you know, get the fee structure just kind of started, see if it does business, to the businesses with the larger surfaces, got this in here, and then by, say, July 1, when our new budget starts, then we, you know, prep for the, you know, normal, of that sort.
Yeah, we could put some sort of calculator on the website, where you can take the unit and go in there and enter how many, and kind of get an idea, explain to them that includes parking, not only their roof, but parking.
We don't have a, right now, where residents can find out the.
Inside the analysis, I want to say it was in the analysis, I read it so much, seems like there's all the different options that are available, maybe taking that piece and building around that.
Like in the original.
You know, taking over, an overview.
In the original database that GMC had prepared for the rollout of this initially, magnitude or, if you just kind of making some assumptions on the commercial, whether they did that for every commercial property, I don't remember.
They did. They did.
Yeah, there was just certain, certain ones, um, but that would be not the only kind of law part to.
Avoid confusion on measuring that. We use that for all commercial properties?
Yes, ma'am.
So that.
And, and residential, because there's a caveat in residential, but you can also lower your, but it has to meet certain criteria. If it, if you don't, or 700, and there's, there's a gap in there of some sort.
Lower a certain percentage than you can.
Then you're, you're able to come to, you've got to have a, a surveyor look at that they have to make.
I think there's, if you're a two-acre property and you have less than 10%, of other.
There's, there's several that you can use, but that, that would be used on either or.
But that database would need to be updated, because it's back from 2019, so there's a lot of property owner changes.
GIS that we have.
Yeah. I just wonder, you know, we've got several members of Stormwater been talking about, uh, come on up to the microphone if you don't mind, Mr. Salers.
Hello, Tommy Salers. Uh, one of the recommendations we had on commercial, uh, property, of their, uh, tax, that was kind of one way to keep that fee down. Uh, per, uh, what is it, square foot, per $3.00 per year, and still look at, you know, have a way to calculate the way that it'd be less than their tax, percent of their tax.
Small tax.
Yep. Um, that was just.
Smaller tax.
Well, no, but that way, it's not a tax, but it's a way to, you can put out there for.
Actually reviewed, say, by the, a city attorney, like, that that would be, you know, like, as far as the integrity of the fee and not be challenged?
Well, I, I think we've got some information now from the attorney that says we can't really do.
I kind of explored a number of their locker base to ways to potentially limit the impact on, and, and pretty much, uh, what he kept coming back to was, on property value, but, uh, uh, the fee, anyway, without going into this, yes, I.
Yeah.
Pretty much, the fee needs to remain applicable to all, except in these other properties, uh, you know, any, like that, that takes it off of the actual pervious surface or that metric, you know.
Could get in trouble, yeah.
Then, then creates an option for liability, you know, because, uh, you, you know, it's no longer fee-based on a specific condition, surface, whatever. So, yeah, I, I, I should have four or five different options for things, and that seemed to be, uh, not really an option for us.
I just think at the time that we, we talked about a $3.00 user fee for, um, commercial property, not $5.00.
Residential, right? You can't.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has to be across the board based on what he.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. Three is what I was thinking until I saw these numbers and saw that the first project didn't even be covered with.
Now, all of the commercial numbers aren't there. Just a, a snapshot of the numbers that.
On this list?
Right.
Right.
Yeah, GMC provided us a list, and I want to say it was like, different businesses, it's staying the same all across the board.
Mm-hmm.
But that was just to give you a snapshot of.
And, and this, so these projections also do not include any potential credits that people could apply for and receive, uh, you know, so it's gonna take a year or two to kind of figure out where we're actually gonna end up on an annual basis with, with revenue.
Yeah, that's all I had to think. Other than, because you're, like, you implement it, and then you hit them again if you have years to come, rather than just ripping the Band-Aid off, wouldn't it just be better to just, I mean, just do it right off the rip and then not have to keep going back and changing?
On behalf of the Stormwater Committee, I only get to implement it because we're after it. It's needed in the city.
Identify yourself, please.
Oh, David Riley, 1062 Gruell, San Aris.
Thanks.
Okay, I didn't hear anybody else do it, sorry. But anyway, with respect to the fees, we'll call on fees, I mean, there's other places, if I'm not mistaken, where we have a business fee, a fee for business, and a fee for, uh, residential. And I think that from that standpoint, may be a way to get by these high fees. But just ask that you take a deeper look at that and talk about it in that aspect, because it's not making a difference, uh, for the, uh, people. It's really making it consistent with what makes good sense for the city when they implement this thing. And that's the thing that hung up, I would say, the most in this, and when we presented it, uh, council back in 2009, and so, but anyway, those are my comments, and thanks for taking this up and getting on with what we didn't finish last council.
Thank you.
And thank you for your. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, I think, you know, we, we can certainly go back and ask that specifically with, uh, Mr. Black, could be one of the things he, uh, test, charges more likely to be a tax if it is, if it raises general revenue based on the ability, is mandatory, is unrelated to the payer's contribution to the problem, a burden on the government, and does not confer a special benefit on the payer, so, you know, whether, that, you know, kind of, may have as much impact as a, as a, you know, family residence does, you know, whether or not that can be done or not, specific question for him, but, um, what is, uh, what's everybody kind of feel about what Jeremy said? And is there kind of a feeling which way we should be looking at?
I said, just go ahead and do it.
Yeah. As long as we give plenty of implemented, where citizens, businesses have the opportunity to start working on getting a credit up, you know, before we implement the fee, um, then staying out, we might need to start slower and give people a chance to get their credits, if there's anything they can do to their properties to, uh, earn, earn the, the credits in, in the manual. What would be a reasonable amount?
That's what I was gonna ask.
That's something we have to, I mean, I.
Is, is a quarter now?
I say, I mean, if we could shoot, you know, January 1, I mean, we're gonna figure out this manual, uh, body positioned, ready to do it, we're gonna have to prepare some marketing stuff, information out to the public, have an opportunity for some of that, and then a little time for that actual, uh, application, credit, you know, application process, that's gonna be kind of overwhelming in year 1, because a lot, a lot of these are good for, these credits are good for five years, uh, you know, so once they get it, they've got it for five years, uh, until they re, or it gets reaffirmed, but, uh, so it's likely to be, you know, uh, in the year of implementing.
And if we're gonna say January 1, so, out there, if that's gonna be the date to get started, you know, I think it would be, you know, fair to, that we should start, you know, having our marketing to get, you know, start putting out there by October 1 to give a full three months of advertising and getting it out there to the public, if we're prepared, uh, you know, businesses alike, and, uh, you know, start working on credits if they see it beneficial to them.
Yes, sir.
I do want to mention one thing, remember, the database still, yep, that's liable to take a couple months, you know, that's a, a painstaking kind of process going property by property, so that is, uh, won't even have that final kind of number for, I'm assuming, a few months. Have you had any?
That's what I was fixing, my understanding is that we still have a credit, not a credit, but we've, we've, that original contract, we still have the ability to, and us paid, we still get them in for true, as far as the functioning and operation and validating the, the addresses and stuff.
Once we get the database, it has to be put into our billing system.
Are there any automated process for getting that data from one place to another?
Uh, that's not something I'm privy to.
I believe that, I believe that has had the ability in the past to be able to take Excel information and, and move it up, usually a fee associated with that as well, so just FYI.
How many, about how many utility amounts are we talking about?
You've got like 78 residential, 7800 residential.
So, should we have the GIs quickly as possible, like, set a baseline, GIS data point, and then allow plenty of time before January 1, like, months to get this in? Marcia?
For online, or, or bring it over?
Or bring it over.
God willing, I'll take care of it. May I gently suggest that instead of, uh, January the 1st, since we got to get all of these other things in place and conversion, uh, data over to a fiscal year beginning, would that be something that y'all would like to consider, maybe?
I, I mean, definitely consider, um, you know, it's because, you know, you're one of the beer parks, what makes this work, because that's a decision that, you know, also Bobby, you know, has to have a hand into as far as like, be ready to, to.
From, from what I'm, I'm gonna get this thing ready to rock and roll on January the 1st, and money coming in, is that what I'm hearing?
Potentially, uh, we, we, I think that wasn't our date, that was just like a random date the mayor just threw out there, and we said, sure, there's a date.
Uh, because, I, I mean, from, from now until the end of the year, kind of got a lot going on, uh, but, but it would also give time, from what I'm hearing from Bobby too, by moving that date for a fiscal year begin, uh, that, that might be more feasible than, if I lost you, uh, than January the 1st.
May I make a recommendation that we reach out to GMC, have conversations with them on what it would take to develop the database and sets that we need to accomplish what we need to, have conversation, help, get them to help us with, I think, in the back of our head, if I can, is looking at July 1 date, and the reason I'm saying, like, right now, we've got, um.
I've got audit going on.
We've got the audits going on, we've got.
I got a couple of RFPs out.
That is being developed as we speak, by the way, manager report with that, your updates. Um, there, we, this is just an action-packed part of the time.
Well, like I said, I mean.
Opportunity to get folks in here that can help us.
I think, you know, my, is, you know, we get started as soon as we can get started. I mean, yeah, I understand now with needing to do the, uh, updating of, uh, the database and, you know, having, you know, numbers that we may not really be ready to go by, you know, January 1, but if, if it's, we'll do it as soon as we can do it and get on, start collecting money, because next hurricane season will be here, you know, next year, and we'll be closer than we are right now if we don't get started. So, I, I agree that, you know, yeah, let's get with GMC, let's, uh, let's get a conversation, you know, we, we can come back and vote on something later.
And could we get some info, what it might cost us to do a data import from the GIS? And maybe we spend some money on that and get half some.
Yeah, and, and based off that tasking, uh, to get that completed.
Two weeks.
Two weeks, two, two weekses, three, two weekses, four, two weekses, be looking at that.
So, uh, so, part of what we, we're talking about, I guess, you know, is the, uh, and this will give us some time, obviously, to figure out exactly who's gonna administer it, you know, make sure they're prepared to administer and, uh, and, and we're staffed and we have all those kind of things that GMC is on board, and that was part of the original contract to be able to go back and, and, you know, we just need to initiate that process ASAP and, uh, and move, move as we're able to.
So, do we want to ask for management's recommendation on where the stormwater management, that's where that person's gonna be?
There's actually recommendations in the, in that, uh, financial assa, uh, analysis, I'm sorry, I'm bored, three hours of sleep, uh, that financial analysis has a breakdown and a recommendation should be set up, doesn't identify necessarily people, but identifies positions, so.
That was in Public Works, if I remember.
Yeah, I'd be happy to nominate somebody. Not calling any, any names, not here.
Let us, let us, we'll, we'll all, if I've got enough.
Okay. Alright, anything more on this tonight?
So, can I recap real quick, some marching orders? So, we are looking at the $5.00 per ERU, see on the, on the data points and, and the rollout and everything else, and what we've got left with them, understand what we've got, um, determining the ability to import both GIS data and the other information end-to-end to be able to do the thing and everything like that, and develop.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yep, thank you.
Outstanding.
More on this? Alright.
Thank you, Mr. Ma. I can say that my.